And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Vermenter?
Here.
Alderman Codwell?
Here.
Alderman Couch?
Here.
Alderman John Stuppi?
Here.
Alderman Jokers?
Here.
Alderman Donnie Stuppi?
Here.
Alderman Hook? Alderman Prince?
Here.
Alderman Ross?
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. The presentations, uh, for my personal appearances. Move to the agenda. Oh, sorry. All of the mayor?
Aye.
opposed? Ten under personal appearances, we have Mr. R. Arber.
Uh, there's been a number of emails go around, so I don't know what you have copies of or what you don't have copies of, uh, so I did make a, another set of copies of the, uh, proposed breakdown of the allocations. And also, uh, as I know there was some problems with some of the emails getting delivered, I made a copy of this particular email, which I think tried to summarize the, uh, important points of the changes that we had made and why. Is that enough, or, do I have one? Need more? Frank, you need one? Do you have one? So, uh, the first page there has the breakdown of the new allocations. And then with the email, I'll just kind of run through that real quick, that, uh, first of all, we, uh, adjusted down the, um, stormwater, um, we, we lowered that $7,000 because we have a stormwater detention basin there, and I knew that that number would be high. Some of these others maybe too, but until we go back and do some more engineering and design. Uh, and the reason we went with this, these rough budget numbers, uh, we'd spent over $3,000 on the first design, and in order to get specific, I'd have to spend another $5,000 to locate sewer water, stormwater, so we, we come up with general numbers there. Paragraph two, then, the proposal does not include any parking lot overlay, which was, uh, Alderman Hook's, uh, main objection to the project, I believe. To guarantee that the project will be built, uh, what were proposed, and then we've discussed this with the title company, uh, the funds would, uh, go into escrow account with Dave Weber, and Dave Weber would handle the dispersal of the funds, um, which would guarantee the construction, uh, of the units to be built, and I think those were the main issues that Alderman, Stuppi, and Mr. Ross had, was the guarantee that the project would get built. And, uh, as the, uh, city manager pointed out there, the, uh, these are budget numbers, the only thing that would really get dispersed would be, uh, um, things that were eligible. So, the process that we were trying to, uh, develop here was eligible, um, areas that could be, would be qualified, and also that the money would be held and handled by the title company, uh, to control the funds, which was fine with us, and that also saves another step as far as getting lien waivers and things of that nature, uh, taken care of. So, um, I did ask if anyone had any questions, and I haven't heard from anyone, so I'll field any questions at this point, then.
Acquisitions?
Acquisitions is an eligible amount, yes.
Buying a property?
Yes.
Maybe I'll need to go out and buy some tonight, too.
You have a project? It's in the TIF. Yes.
Ron, um, I guess the last email I saw?
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember who all was copied on, um, was from Chauncey Buckhite, uh, raising concerns about arms length transaction and eligibility through TIF for that.
Okay. Uh, well, I think Chauncey said the acquisition was eligible, and he's not a lawyer to say whether this, this arms length.
I don't think he was giving a legal opinion.
No.
I think he was recalling history-
Right.
-of all the various TIFs that his office has been involved with.
Right. And I, and I do not know, uh, I can't answer that, I'm not an attorney either, I think he was acknowledging that acquisitions were eligible, but whether it's arms length or not, I'll have to defer to, uh, your legal counsel whether this would be considered arms length.
I think we have to, can, uh, have to defer to the TIF legal counsel to get, uh, our best opinion, but would, would that be the appropriate step to take?
Well, I'm not exactly clear the relationship between, uh, the acquiring company and the selling company, and whether or not they are, um-
They would be the same ownership.
So, I, I think the question is whether or not a sale between identical entities would change the opinion of the, uh, bond counsel in terms of limitations, I don't, I don't know what they will say. Uh, I would, I mean, if, if they are exactly the same, uh, then it's, I, I think that frames the question clearly for the bond counsel to answer, do you stand by your old opinion, or will this be, uh, eligible for acquisition funding?
I guess my concern is that we make sure we get a, a real good, solid advice, um, that way, if, if we approve something that, and one of the other tasking entities says, hey, wait a minute, you know-
Totally agree.
We'd be, we'd be writing somebody a check for-
Totally agree. Well, I, I tell you what, uh, since, uh, I got that email too-
Okay.
-gave it a lot of thought, so I'm gonna go back and reference an email that I got a copy of that was sent to Dave Hamilton DeModler by Design, that's the welding deal from several years ago, and this letter was written by the city administrator, and I'll go to this paragraph here. Wait a minute, Ron, I've got a copy of that, I'll just spin it. Okay. Uh, I'll refer to the second paragraph where it says, "The city is willing to acquire the parcel of ground, construct a concrete pad foundation, and extend tropic industrial court to serve the 3.93 acre parcel, providing that concrete design and road construction are within the means available for this work. After purchasing the ground, the city will have approximately 135,000 available for the pad and the road. The city would then lease the lot and improvements to the company at little or no cost to you." Uh, so, in that situation, the city was willing to spend the 135,000 for the improvements and acquire the land, which is 40,000, so that would have been $175,000. And the city would then lease the lot and the improvements to your company at little or no cost. So, I actually have another, uh, idea here that I think will solve the problem, and that is this. Uh, today, or yesterday, I got my property tax bill, and today I went and paid, uh, the taxes on the Old Town property out there of $19,100.72, okay? Of it, $19,100, $2,573.62 were city dollars. So, less than 13.5% of the total tax bill was city dollars. See where I'm coming from? So, if you took 13.5% of 50,000, you're looking at about $6,500. Now, if you, if you did the other deal here, you weren't gonna get anything back, so, um, here's a idea that I just discussed for a minute with my partner. Instead of any other entity acquiring the land, we would suggest that the, uh, city acquire the land, and we lease it back like you were going to do with the other guys here, and at the end of five years, we have an option to buy it for $13,500. In essence, of the 50,000, only 6,500 is city dollars anyway, under any other plan, you wouldn't get any money back. So, what I'm suggesting is, the city buy it, we lease it back, we go on and build it, and we have an option to buy the land back twice to what the city's portion of the money, which they would never get any of anyway, or something along those lines. In other words, under the other proposal here, that's what the city was gonna do, buy the land, make the improvements. And of the, uh, money that was used for acquisition, we put that in escrow to guarantee it was used for construction. It would certainly be arms length, that was the same type of a structure as before, it eliminates us, uh, a lot of legal costs and setting up a corporation and doing a back and forth paper.
You know, Ron, uh, you know, to read more into the letter, the next paragraph is, uh, there is desire that the citizens of the community benefit in the expenditure of these funds. This was gonna create 10 jobs, uh, we thought more jobs, it didn't happen, uh, there were some questions about things.
Sure, sure, I know the fellow part, I know-
I didn't know, if we give you 174,000 of TIF money, what benefits is the city getting back besides what we pay as far as taxes? You're paying those taxes now, what-
Well, future taxes, the new building of-
How much in future taxes are we talking about?
Well, it depends upon how good the sales are.
Okay, so-
Well, let me, yeah-
You're expecting a lot more sales, a lot more rooms being rented than what they have been rented?
Let, let me just say something about jobs, and no one has worked harder, I, I won't say no one, but I've worked as hard as anybody getting jobs in the community, tomorrow I'm suing the property, somebody for 40 jobs, and they're not asking for any of that. In that particular situation there, because I was very familiar with it, okay, that company was moving from Illinois over to here, but eight of their, eight of their welders were commuting from Perryville over to there, and they were gonna commute up to here. So, though you're creating eight jobs, those eight jobs were Perryville workers, they're not St. Genevieve workers. So, you know, sometimes we get hung up on the job thing, in my opinion, maybe a little too much. Another example, years ago, when Build Fest was rolling, they were bringing van loads of workers in from the outer areas to keep the factory going. So, when you talk about jobs, and again, I've worked as hard getting jobs here as anybody, you, sometimes you have to analyze the jobs and what do you really get out of those jobs if it's somebody out of town commuting in and driving back out. So, what I will say is, is that, as I've said before, uh, from the standpoint of creating taxes, there's no entity creates more tax as a percentage than our project. And as far as building the project, I think I've gone through those numbers, it's a very risky project, and the only reason we're considering it is because that was a requirement to move forward. So, uh, what is the city getting out of it? Well, I think the city got, uh, well, the, the county got $19,100 of my property taxes today, and, and, uh, we generate 12 to 13,000 every year for the tourism tax, and, you know, I can't tell you what our numbers are going to be, there's a lot of risk in doing this project.
But you keep telling me what the taxes you pay, this is on the property that you own now.
Right.
I asked, what are the benefits to the city that we give you 174,000? What is our return to the city? And you keep telling me-
And, and I don't-
...the taxes you pay.
Well, and I-
That's already done.
I, yes, you're right, and there will be hopefully more sales and more property tax, there will be more property tax, we know that, because I haven't seen anybody got an abatement on property tax. On sales, I can't tell you what the sales are gonna be, and I think I was very clear early on, it's a high-risk project, and if we, we still don't know what our interest rate's gonna be on a loan and some of those sorts of things, so, until that's determined, we may not even do the project if you did this, or if you did a lesser amount, if you did 145, we still may not do the project until we determine what the interest rate's gonna be and the amortization, because if it, if this project can't make a principal, interest, tax, and insurance payment, at least a reasonable chance to do that, we're not gonna do it. Because all we're gonna be doing is paying more property tax, more utilities, and all those sorts of things, and when you talk about taxes, if you look at the $3,500 electric bill last month, the city gets utility tax off of that, phone companies, so, it isn't just, I'm just saying the direct taxes, and I understand what you're saying, Teddy, and all I'm saying is, is that, that's a risk you take when you make a commitment to any project, you've got the same risk on Ron Coleman's, something may happen for whatever reason, and he may lose a big account, you may not have those jobs, now, I mean, that's exactly the risk. I, I understand your question, Teddy, and it's a, it, look, it's a joint venture, I would just tell you frankly, it's a joint venture. And we're willing to absorb a certain amount of risk.
Yeah, but you're saying if you don't get this full amount of money, then you're not willing to take the risk. You will not have-
No, I didn't say that, I said, until we get the numbers put together. We're not gonna take the money if we can't make the numbers work, I think I made that up, yeah.
But you said, uh, if you only get 145,000.
Pardon me?
You said if you only get 145,000, you probably wouldn't do it.
No, I didn't say that, I said, whatever the number, whether it was 145 or, or whatever, I think you put aside 145 before.
Can you run, run through your numbers? Look, I didn't have a chance to write those down, of how you would structure that with the city, uh, can you run through those again?
You mean, on the lease deal?
Yeah, on the lease deal.
Well, I, I was just sitting there, um, and, and, uh, read that thing, and started trying to figure out a way, well, basically what I'm saying, Dick, is, is if you take our tax bill we paid today, it was $19,100.72, the city's portion of that was $2,573.62, which equals 13.47%. Now, if you do a TIF commitment, under any circumstance, you don't, the city don't normally get money back, okay? So, if you did 50,000, okay, 13.5% of that is, you can run the number, $6,500, more or less, I don't have a calculator here, okay?
Okay.
So, all, all I'm saying is, is that if you did that, and we did a lease back, and then purchased it down the road, you're gonna pick up some money, okay, which is more than what you would get on, you know, if you did 100% or some other way. I was just trying to come up with-
Right, you're saying five, five, you're thinking five years, something like that?
Make it 10 years, you, a dollar a year for 50 years, I, you can do a land lease and keep the land forever, I don't care. Uh, uh, I read the same email that Tom read, and then I read later in the evening, how the other deal was structured, where the city was gonna own it and lease it back, and so, under that scenario, there was nothing in there that said, it said little or no payment, or whatever, so I'm saying, well, gee, if it's little or no, you know, put some number in, and I just use the percentage of what the taxes were.
Okay.
Okay. Trying to, go ahead.
I, I think this, uh, new proposal with that caveat, it's definitely something we should discuss at, at length, um, either in a work session, or being in real estate, uh, I don't know, may or may not qualify for a closed session, but I would be very comfortable to, to move forward in any direction at right at this point.
And I totally understand that, I'm just trying to come up with another structure that might possibly work to get the project off of Dead Center, and based on the email that, and I sent the email to Frank, so he had a chance to look it over, and I understand the concerns, so. Any other questions?
So, we can, um, well, we can, how will you discuss it, we need to do a work session or-
Going to closed session afterwards if it's a real estate.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, well, Martin, what do you?
Um, I'll catch on to things that aren't self-explanatory. The very public risk provides our Workman's Comp Insurance, and, uh, and, and it's a membership program, and, and, and one of the services they offered to us was a review of our personnel policy. Their new man, the guy that is customer service, came in to visit with us, and we got a report from them on recommended changes to our personnel manual. So, we're gonna be looking at those recommendations and other changes we need, just kind of updated, and, uh, be presenting to you a revised personnel, uh, policy manual in, in the near future. I mentioned to you, uh, MOSIP, which is the investment program that many cities use, and I talked to their representatives about coming in and making a presentation, and, talking about the options that are available to us. Petrie has some experience with them, and, uh, her work in-
Wentzville.
University City Wentzville, and, uh, she said Wentzville has benefited greatly by, uh, contracting for, for their services, so, uh, I'm gonna wait till after the holidays and, and ask them to come in and, and make a presentation too. The, um, Greg Hilbert, who is here-
Hi, Greg.
Uh, went by and looked at the Market Street property, the Commercial Street property, and, uh, is considering whether or not he wants to make a proposal for, for its demolition, and, uh, so, uh, and one other individual is going to take a look at it, so hopefully we'll have another alternative for, for, for that project. Bob Wolf is an attorney who represents Continental Insurance, uh, claimed against us, who came in and, uh, met with Dave and me, uh, because it's a personal injury claim for someone who fell and was injured in front of the post office, um, on the sidewalk, so, um, they're defending that, that suit, and, uh, Dave will be giving deposition on, kind of history of that site, condition of the sidewalk. There's a slight leak, uh, damaged some records and restored back in the back here. I've met with people who say, you know, are you well-positioned to preserve your records in the case of a natural disaster? We're not really. So, we had somebody in today from Rico, who, they do data imaging services, and, uh, they kind of, we're gonna look at the volume of material that we have and give us a quote for doing, uh, digital imaging, so we have our physical record backed up somewhere, and, uh, and, and stored safely. I don't, I expect it to exceed anything we budgeted this year unless we get some new income, but I'll, I'd like to have it, uh, to present in our next budget cycle. And, uh, finally, attended the Levy District meeting, uh, Monday night, um, they've been having problems with people going out the Levy Road, uh, the real problem is not something we can control, what they get up there on four-wheelers and ride up and down the, the banks of the Levy, which does damage to the, to the Levy, and, and, and if they're, if we see them, we stop them, but we don't really have any enforcement authority there, uh, but we do have enforcement authority kind of within that portion of the Levy that's in the city limits, so they requested that I present to you the idea of us posting at the, coming off the Marina Road, down, up on the Levy, a speed limit, with the knowledge that it's only enforceable within that portion of the road that's in the city limits, but at least it establishes, uh, in the eyes of somebody who's driving up there, that they need to, to, to reduce their speed and stay under control. They could, and have, from time to time, put a cable up and try to keep people off of it, but that doesn't seem to survive for very long, uh, so, um, it kind of with your consent, I would draft an ordinance for our next meeting to establish that, that speed limit, the 20 miles per hour. Uh, you got a little map there showing about where we would put the sign.
I didn't know anybody was allowed on those.
They can, they, it's not a public road, and, and they could keep people from going up there, but didn't they have to put up trespassing signs, you know, there's a state statutes on how you trust, keep people from trespassing, they've tried to control it with gates and, and, and they haven't, they don't, haven't, haven't been successful in keeping the wire barrier intact, so, you know-
But if we put up a speed limit sign that's inviting them on it-
We, we discussed that, yeah.
-if we put up a no trespassing sign, it'll keep them, it'll deter them.
That, that was discussed.
Are we talking about the paved road to the Marina, or the gravel road?
Gravel road going up there.
So then, what do we do about police, and they're gonna expect us to keep it policed all the time?
Well, I, I explained to them, our only enforcement authority is right there, now we do, I mean, we do watch it, watch out for it, but, again, if, if, absent, they're taking some initiative to control traffic, we can't keep people off the levee.
Was Carl on it?
Huh?
Was Carl?
Yeah, Carl was the one who was insisting on it.
I thought he owned that road going across there.
He still wants, he's the one who wanted this move.
Thought he was one, I thought he was the one that was really-
Against anybody going across his road except for maintenance-
Yeah.
Yeah, he is.
Okay.
They just want us to put up a speed limit sign.
I tell you what, let's do this. Y'all have another meeting before your next meeting? I'll tell them that you're willing to go along with it, and see if they've given it more thought, and if they say, yeah, we thought about it, we'd still like to do it, I'll bring you an ordinance for the next meeting.
Okay, let him tote it up, it's his property. Well, you just make a sign for, uh, Carl.
They'll pay for the sign.
I know, but it's still his property, it's gonna be-
Well, part of it, that little piece getting over there, I think, is, but he was pretty adamant before about the gate always being closed because it was his, his road, and he didn't want anybody on it.
Well, it's not, it's, it's built on a easement, which I have read, that he granted to the Levy District for the purposes of, of maintaining the road for the maintenance of the levee, so, the Levy District has, they have the rights to that road.
Okay, so, he said before that only people with the Levy District can go on the road? That's all he's on the file?
He has told me the same thing, but I can't explain this change of heart.
So, he's really, he's just-
Okay.
Restricting them to 20 miles an hour?
Give them a speed limit sign. How, how difficult is this decision?
That's it.
But in order, in order to make it enforceable, it has to establish all of this, as I say.
That's it.
So, any questions? Steve, one here.
Good evening, sir, gentlemen, ladies. Steve got called away, there's a, currently, there's a 12-inch water main break right now, out in Point Base area, behind, uh, Point Base tank, the water line runs out to the community center, goes down Progress Parkway, it's shut down right at this moment, and they'll be digging that up and making that repair today, so, anybody listening, if their water's affected around Progress Parkway, you'll be on a 48-hour boil advisory until 48 hours from now. You have me tonight, uh, one thing I'd like to give you is, uh, I have a check here for, I have your refund check for $5,054, this is on the repair account.
Which one of us is it for?
Uh, you.
Oh, nice.
You're on TV.
For, for the, for the newer people on the council, what that is, is every year, there's money set into an account for repair and maintenance, uh, that's your all's money, and so, we have the right to spend it on certain dollar amounts, uh, to make repairs, and what we don't spend, you get refunded back, so, that's the, that's the refunded part from the repair account.
Has there, has there been a year since you've started with the city that there was not a refund?
Uh, you know, no, I don't think so, I think every year, there's been a refund, uh, actually, a couple of years ago, the refund was much larger than we, we really wanted, because there was projects that needed to get done, that some of the projects were so long and, uh, time-consuming, we didn't get, get it spent as well, and so, you know, but every year, there's been something back, 5,000 is probably the second highest number that you've gotten back, but, uh, it typically runs somewhere around 2,000 to 6,000 or 8,000 dollars out of that money, so, uh, three questions on that? Uh, I also got a letter from Steve to pass out, that's gonna be coming up in a little bit, there's, uh, a- There's a repair to some valves that he's gonna be requesting. And here's a letter that he had drafted up for you guys to, so that you had a better understanding maybe of the repairs. It's on the, it's on the valves that the wastewater plant for the slugs down. So you'll have that when that comes up in a few minutes. Flushing got done for the community last month. I think it went very well. We had a couple of hydrants that, that broke because of the flushing. There's been a list of some minor repairs that need to be made to the hydrants. Some chains were rusted up and things that's gotta be replaced. And the guys are scheduling that, that work to be done throughout the cold weather months. And in October also, the submittals were received for the new SCADA system. There's been some complications with those submittals and some dialogues been going back and forth the last few days trying to get the final submittals completed. There's some language that was left out of them. An example would be the M Road Tower. The language said that it would be operated by an altitude valve, which that's not correct. It would be operated through an analog system. And so there's just some, some little, six or eight discrepancies that we're trying to get worked through. I was hoping that those letters would be received back to us early enough to hand those out tonight, but you'll, you'll be getting those later this month or probably looking at them at the next board meeting. And another problem that we encountered on the SCADA system, the new SCADA system, they came in last month and was doing some work. There's a control panel in the upper level of the water plant that's got some excessive corrosion on it. And every time you, you mess with it, something on it's not right. And the microcom company's thinking that that needs to be replaced. It's a very expensive panel. The cost of that panel is, it's probably gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of 50% of the total proj, project cost. I think that's a large amount. At this point in time, I wouldn't be in favor of recommending a change order to the project that's of that size. I think it maybe needs to be looked at in a different way. Steve and Martin and myself probably have some more communication on that in the upcoming days to see how we'll move forward on this.
I definitely agree with your conclusion.
Yeah, I just, I, I can't see, I can't see doing a change order 50% of the project.
What I understand is when, when they came in and was quoting our system, did they evaluate the controls?
I will tell you that I evaluated it when I came up with the cost estimate to be budgeted. And there, that's the reason that the budgeted amount was about $145,000 for the SCADA system. I'm not an engineer of designing SCADA systems, so that was a, you know, it's an educated assumption in doing some research. When the bids came in at $90,000, I'm like, that's a lot cheaper than I expected. So, going through the submittals, we noticed that, hey, this, this box is not in here. Did you guys come and pay attention to this? And then there was some investigating and it was left out of the bid package.
So none of the bidders included?
None of the bidders included it. So, nobody had an option to bid on that. So, my experience tells me that something of 50% of the total cost of the project and you were, I'm not in favor of giving it to the low bidder when if it was possibly in the project, somebody else could've designed that panel much cheaper. And instead of it being 50% of the project, it might've been 30%. So, right now I would be leaning towards, we need it, rebidding that particular item and having it built. And the person who gets the job on the SCADA system needs to, if they don't get the job, they need to be in communication with the people building it.
But it's not anticipated that the combined cost would exceed the budgeted amount?
That would be my assumption, that the combined cost, even adding this, would still come in right about the budgeted amount of the whole project. The, the initial project came in much under budgeted amount.
And control panel.
Yes, correct. Is there any other questions about the report or any questions you might have for me? Yes, yes.
We've been having a lot of water breaks.
Yes, sir.
And really, I thought a lot of water breaks happened when it got colder and falling and we're having a lot now.
Yes, sir.
Maybe you can kind of tell the audience that how things are going as far as replacing the, the main water lines again, like we talked about with Sarah and down San Jose Road.
Sure, and one of the, one of the reasons that we're having some water breaks right now is because we just did a major maintenance project of flushing the system. And when you flush the system, you're changing the direction of the flow of the water. You're changing the pressure of the water in different zones. You're turning lots of valves on and off and you're causing water hammer. And, and there's no real way around that because when you flush these lines out, you have to increase the volume of water through those lines to a point that it causes scouring to clean the lines up. And you're, you know, the lines are just used to having water going in one direction at, say, 50 pounds of pressure. When you go to closing valves and changing the direction of the, the line, you start finding the weak points. That's what causes a lot of water main breaks for the several days and weeks after a flushing system. Another thing that causes them is water breaks. When you have a main break, now you've shut the pressure off to this section of town and now you just increase the pressure to another section of town. So, part of the maintenance of, of distribution system is cleaning it and finding the weak points. And you, you make the repairs. So, these, the majority of these, I would have to say are probably a direct relationship to that. Two of the main breaks that's happened in the last few weeks wasn't a, a direct relationship because of a hydrant was leaking and then there was a repair to the hydrant. And then, so that line got shut off and while fixing that, it caused another leak. We had two in one day and it was because a line just got shut off, increased the pressure and changed the direction, caused the line to break in another area close by. There were old lines. Some of them were scheduled to be replaced in this project that we're working on. Last week, and I think you have a, I think you have a copy in there, I don't have to pack it with me, but I think there's a, a letter in there from Cochrane Engineering. They came into town, they've started the process. The third-party agreement between the state and the city and Cochrane has been approved and signed and they're on their way to designing the project. I would anticipate that construction of any of these projects, after funding this stuff's in place, probably be late spring before anything would, probably any construction would be done. But the project is moving forward. Anybody, as you all know, through lots of projects revolved around the state and it revolved about things, it takes a long time to get to the closure. So, I don't think anybody's dragging their feet. I think, I think the city's working hard, I think our staff's working hard and I think Cochrane Engineering's working hard. But everybody was really busy at one time, ready to go. And then the state caused us to slow down. We waited on them for weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks. And so now, everything's in place. They're, they've been in town, they've been surveying, they've been now actually doing design. Everything prior to now was kind of done off of Google Earth, a little bit of design, minor amounts of surveying, just to get cost estimates put together. So, hopefully next summer, there'll be a lot of construction for water mains. Does that answer your question?
Thanks, Terry.
You bet.
Terry, I have a comment around the water main breaks as well. This last weekend was when you had, there were two main breaks at one time.
Yes, sir.
I did receive a call from Steve on the break that was in my ward.
Okay.
Because it affected my house. And it was, that was one of our first cold evenings and cold nights. And I know that they worked on one to completion and they started on the second one. And the second one, they didn't get done until 1:30 in the morning.
Yes, sir.
And I just felt like those guys should be acknowledged for sticking with it, working that hard because it was a cold night and they worked till, they worked on the main, the water didn't come back on until 1:30. And I'm sure they had cleanup and things to do after that. So, I just really think that, that we're lucky to have Steve in his crew.
I appreciate that. Now, I'll make sure we pass that on to them. They do work hard and again, that's why Steve left here a while ago. The, the crew's onsite, the line's shut down and they'll be working on that tonight. So, I appreciate that and, and we appreciate working for you guys. Any other comments? Yes, sir?
So, anybody right now that's got flags and everything in their yard, there's nothing going on other than the side.
Yeah, what, what happens is when they call in locates and an engineer's gonna come out and do surveying. So they call in the locates and then everybody that's in the response to that has to go out and mark their utilities so that the person designing the water line has an idea of where those utilities are. And, and, you know, when construction takes place, I want to warn everybody, when construction takes place, those lines are not always gonna be exactly where they're supposed to be. I mean, somebody goes out and marks a line and it's supposed to be electric line and, you know, they caught an old runner line somewhere and they go to dig it up and golly, it's in the wrong spot. And so there will be a lot of field adjustments, but that's what those flags are for. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Talking about water line breaks reminded me of something that I didn't put in on the report, but I think you should hold out. The American Bankers Association is endorsing text casting system for local governments. They've offered it at a text casting company at very reasonable prices. It's $1,200 for the first year, but if it's got set up, $1,000 a year thereafter, you get unlimited texting and unlimited advertising. So, I've approached the banks because it's their association that's responsible for us having, having this opportunity about buying the advertising to fund the text casting system.
How does advertising work on a text casting system?
When it comes out to you and says, this text is brought to you by M or B Bank, then they get it for free.
And then add the message. So you're not getting additional messages? It's just part of the message?
Yeah. We, we think, we think, we have water line breaks, snow issues, some road closures, meeting notices. We, we think five a week is a minimum that we would be putting on it. So they get pretty good coverage, pretty good exposure. And so as soon as I gotta get the commitments, I'll be bringing that contract to you for your consideration.
One more thing I would like to say. I got a phone call from my boss, Tim Garrity. He was at home the other night and it was after a football game when they had water leaks. And he's a, he's, he's hooked in with Twitter, the city of St. Genevieve. And the announcement of the boil advisory came over Twitter and he sends me a text message telling me how cool that was to get a boil advisory notice from the city of St. Genevieve on Twitter. So, by following the city, he got that and he's, lives in St. Charles County.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I mean, if you had enough sponsors and enough people that was using it, $1,000 a year, I don't know, not the only one. Do you really want the advertising on it? I mean, I guess.
Well.
I mean, at that point, it's certainly true.
As long as, you know, the advertising only came with a message and that we ensured that the messages had a substantial reason to be sent, that wouldn't bother me a bit. But if I got, you know, started to get.
Well, we can establish if.
Text messages of football game scores and I would just pull them on top.
It's all about new city business.
Right.
Okay, we got the reports from the fire department. He'll be at the next meeting. So I see they still need five more volunteers for the final time. Anybody's listening out there?
That brings up a question that I have. What channel on Charter Cable are, is channel seven or channel 98?
900 and 901.
I thought it was 990 and 991.
We should change our name to channel 900 and 991.
Who picked those channels?
So somebody has some idea what.
Charter, we, 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 we had long conversations about keeping the, and they said, you know, we, we can't control that. It's all kind of.
Well, the biggest complaint I got was from some of the older people that they were mixed in with the pay, you know, Playboy channels and.
Yeah?
The adult channels, so they were too close to those.
And they get those free of charge?
No.
So these are old people who.
But when you're getting, when you have to go through the menu to get to it, you're going through all the listings for all the adult channels to get to the public service. And they said, well, the kids, if, then I don't know how many kids watch the government access anyways, but. They said it was just poor placement.
We negotiated as hard as we could to get them.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Actually getting something with nine in it was, was kind of the outcome of those negotiations because I don't know where we would've been otherwise.
We should seriously consider changing the.
The name of the.
The, our name, just so people do know where to go.
Yeah.
Something to be thought, to talk about and discuss and put on the.
Well, we'll do it at the next.
Community meeting for that.
Community television.
I think they were talking about.
Yeah, I think about it.
You could, 990 plus 991.
The picture is kind of bouncing, is it still that way?
Yes, it is.
It's wavy. Yeah, that's a, that's something that's gonna have to. My understanding is, the solution to that is they have to rewire the service to the equipment downstairs. So it's all on a dedicated circuit. Right now, it's on different surfaces, circuits and the signals are not harmonious. So, you get these wavy bars. And that's extent, that's the extent of my technical knowledge of telepathy.
Okay, next we got Sandra.
Good evening, everyone. You have my report there in front of you. In the month of October, you can see we had just over 3,000 guests through the Welcome Center, 3,087. That was 3% over last year's figure of 3,011. And for the year-to-date, we're up 11%. In September and October, that tends to be a peak for us in terms of groups, both school groups and adult groups. So, I just, I thought you might be interested to know that we had 14 adult tour groups through St. Genevieve during the months of September and October for approximately 550 individuals. One of those was the American Queen. I feel like we're probably fortunate to have gotten one visit by the tour boat even though we'd like to have more and to have maybe more access to those passengers when they're passing up and down the Mississippi. Eight student tour groups and that was almost 500 students in those two months. So, if you see any of the staff or heads of those historic homes, they have been very busy with student groups and sometimes with all the rain that we had there for about a week or so in October, there were a lot of changes. And my staff worked with those tour houses to make sure that the impacts of those changes were as minimal as possible, but still sometimes it takes a lot of cooperation on their part because you have, you know, 20, 40, 60. One of our student groups, I think, was 120 children at one time and they're going around to all those tour houses. So it takes a lot of coordination. Thanks to them for their flexibility and always being very generous with both the adult groups and student groups. Passports, we had 345 adult passports just in the month of October, 227 students. Technically, after November 1st, the passport sales really drop. Really, you can't sell them too much except for on the weekends when the majority of the houses would be open. Some of those houses, as you know, don't have heater electricity, so it gets a little chilly in there after, and a little dark too in the evening. So, we won't be selling many more passports until the spring. I wanted to highlight some activities and outreach for you in October. Of course, we attended the state tourism conference. We were lucky, it was on our side of the state, was over here in St. Louis. We were able to drive up to that. I made a presentation to the members of the St. Louis Convention and Visitors Commission in October about St. Genevieve as a destination. This one happened to be about day trips that you could easily get to from St. Louis. And there were other communities that really promote tourism that were there trying to get the attention of the members of the St. Louis CBC for that. I did tell them about our Flirtily Bucks program, which you'll hear about a little bit later, and they were very interested in that. Next month, we'll be participating in a Missouri Department of Tourism booth at the Travel South showcase. This is all the southern states that get together and promote group tour visits to the southern states. That's why. That's why it's called Travel South. And this is to tour group operators that would be potentially booking new business. So it's just meetings with these individual tour group operators. And I'm also developing a profile sheet for use at that event promoting St. Genevieve's destination. And then the Flirt-a-Lee Bucks program, I mentioned this last month, and I included on the back sheet of your report this evening, there's kind of a graphic there. These are little wooden nickels that have the St. Genevieve Flirt-a-Lee on the front, the website, and on the back, it says, "This is worth $5 at any participating merchant." The original idea here was to have these be available to the tour group operators to purchase these for people in their tour groups, so that when they're here, they're not just walking around the streets of St. Genevieve, going into the houses, they would actually go into the shops and, you know, have this, you know, money to spend while they're there. And the funds from that come from the sale of those tokens, and then at the end of the month, the merchants can bring those back and redeem them for their $5 in cash. I've already had some that have told me that if you can get more people into the shops and spending more money, we'll even, you know, not redeem the whole $5, maybe we'll, you know, just redeem four out of five or something. So that's going over pretty well, even though it's very early. And if anyone is listening on channel 900 or 990, whatever, and you would like to come down to the visitor center and purchase some of these for gift certificates for the holiday season, they are available. $5 each available in any denomination that you would choose. And we also put together a list of the hours of fall operation for the downtown shops, which is posted on our social media now, and just kind of a handy thing for people to have, especially if people are coming into town and you're not sure when things are open. There's something in St. Genevieve that's open seven days a week, you should know. Just continuing efforts with event committees, economic development, publicity, and advertising. For the Aldrin, I especially wanted to remind you that on November 22nd, we have a Cookie Crumb Trail. This is kind of a point-to-point kind of thing. The merchants downtown make their own cookies, and there's a ticket that's sold, and people can go around, try the cookie. If you like it, you can get the recipe and start your holiday baking. It's on November 22nd. On the 29th, we have Shop Small Saturday. This is actually tying into a larger national effort about encouraging people to shop their hometowns first before they drive out of town. So we hope that lots of people will be doing that. It's strategically the day after Black Friday, so now sure, on your Black Friday, maybe you have to go and take care of those deals out of town, but we hope that you'll be in town on Saturday, November 29th. And then on December 6th and 7th, that's the first weekend of December, and that is the big event, the Holiday Christmas Festival. The parade on Saturday, all the activities at Lions Club Park, music throughout the two days, free musical concerts of very talented musicians from throughout the region, including CMO University, Carbondale Universities in St. Louis as well, as well as our own musicians on Sunday afternoon in the Oregon Concert, the Handbell Choir, and the Wind Ensemble and Choir. So all of that information is on our website, and it's on social media. If you're on Facebook, we have the Visit St. Jen Facebook page. We also have two other St. Genevieve pages, and of course, we're linked to the City Hall page. So that's my report. If anyone has any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. And the answer is yes, we're ready. Okay? Before you ask, yes, we're ready. Can guarantee how long the equipment's going to last, but yes, we're ready.
Are you anticipating something soon?
Saturday.
On the handrail for the bridge, have you run into any problems replacing those?
Actually, we just got all the material in, and we're hoping next week we can start putting it together, so.
I mean, you got the uprights in.
Yeah.
Did you run into any major problems?
We had to replace all of them. So we had to get the metal and get it cut, and, you know, then we drilled it, then we went in and painted it right away, so, yeah. But some of them are, I mean, they're not really all that tight, so we're hoping they hold, so.
The vertical members are metal. The railings are going to be.
They're going to be wood.
Wood. And the expectation is that if something big comes along, the wood will give and the metal will stay in place.
We're doubling two-by-fours, so it actually, it'll be, you know, actually a four-by-four there on the rail, so. But that way, maybe the wood will give instead of tearing up all the metal, you know.
Great. Anything else for Dave?
I'm good.
Eric must have got detained somewhere.
No, he's on vacation this week.
Oh, okay. As you can see, short report there. We'll go right to history.
That's okay, I'm sure he's a big problem. I don't want to belabor the information that's contained in here, but I wanted to draw your attention to a list of properties that have had complaints relating to nuisances. And I thought maybe what might be a good idea is to have a work session either in December or January, so we can go through and let you know what exactly a nuisance is versus just somebody having stuff on their front porch, and make sure you understand exactly what we're looking for when we do that, and solicit your help on identifying properties. I mean, I'm in the office a good part of the day, and Bob is here three days a week, but, you know, we're pretty busy, and so we don't have an opportunity to drive every street every day looking for tall grass, weeds, dierlich vehicles, junk debris, whatever. And you all probably see it much more often. So please let us know if there are things that you think might be a nuisance, and then we can go ahead and issue a warning to the property owner or tenant to get that cleaned up. And I think we'll do a much better job if we can have everybody kind of chipping in on letting us know where the problem properties are. I thought at that time, we could also look at the occupancy inspection issue. I know that that came up at the study session last week, that people are concerned about some of the houses looking like slums and not being well-maintained, and why are those properties being issued occupancy permits? So I thought maybe we ought to review exactly what an occupancy permit does and inspection does versus a building permit versus whatever else may be going on with the home that doesn't really relate to health and safety in the immediate vicinity. So I thought we could cover all those things, and just as a refresher course for you all, and let you know what we're doing and how we're approaching it, so that when you get constituents, why is that house next door done this or that, and you can now tell them and explain to them, well, you know, it's a nuisance, but they've been noted, and we're trying to work with them. It's a process. Try to be courteous right off the bat, send them a nice letter saying, please clean up, cut your grass, whatever it is. And then we give them a certain amount of days to do that, but then eventually, we'll have to issue a court summons. And I think one of the things that we might want to consider is whether there should be mandatory fines rather than kind of a discretionary fine. Because I know that since I've been here, we've had cases that have dragged on for weeks and weeks and weeks over tall grass. And it's like, when you get a ticket, when you speed, you get the ticket and you pay the ticket. You don't argue with the judge, you know, week after week, month after month, about whether or not you were speeding. You pay your ticket and you move on. So I'm thinking that if we're more active in issuing tickets after a courteous notice, of course, that we'll see a turnaround in some of these properties that have been, you know, a problem throughout. So if that's okay with you, I would like to schedule that, and, you know, I don't know if it'll be December or January, but like to present you with some information. I'd also like to include in that, because I think it's important to note that across the planning communities in the United States, there's been a lot of information and a lot of data collected about the effect of an abandoned property or nuisance property on a community. They talk about the broken window theory, and you start out, you have a nice neighborhood, and all of a sudden, somebody's house, there's a broken window that doesn't get fixed. Doesn't get fixed, it doesn't get fixed, and all of a sudden, the grass grows, and the trees, you know, there's leaves, and nobody is maintaining a property, and it just has this terrible spiral effect on an entire neighborhood. And we are seeing that here in St. Genevieve. So it's not that we just want to be busybodies and, you know, like to do these things, but I think it's critically important to maintaining your community, our community, and making sure that people are safe. When you start to see broken windows, guess what happens? Crime starts to happen. And then, once crime starts to happen, you get people that you may not want to have living in your community, because, you know, they're willing to settle for a lower standard. So I think that's part of the analysis that you all need to consider, is that this whole idea of nuisances and code enforcement is to keep your properties in good condition, and therefore have good neighbors, and have increasing property values instead of decreasing property values. I won't go any further unless somebody has any questions, because we have three applicants here on demolition permits, and they've been patiently waiting, so, and, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Oh, we're going to receive a report like this every month?
If that's what you would like, I put everything in there that.
I think that's great.
That way you can see what's going on.
Is there an update on properties and what's going on?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, you're welcome. You're quite welcome. And anytime you have a question, please don't hesitate to call. We're, you know, some of these are just taking a long time, and I understand that. We try to find, sometimes the properties are abandoned. I mean, we can't find the owners. We don't even know where they are. So how do we deal with that? We'll have a good discussion about how we go abating those nuisances in the future. So if there's nothing else, I'll sit down and.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your reports. Okay, minutes of poll code third.
Move to approve.
Aye. Call in favor.
Aye.
Post. Minutes of poll session for October the ninth, and. Second. Call in favor.
Aye.
Post. Poll session minutes for October 14th. Second. Call in favor.
Aye.
Post.
Move to approve.
Second. Call in favor.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Resolutions 2015-02, a resolution of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, stating intent to apply for a grant from the St. Genevieve County Community Development Fund in an amount not to exceed $7,775 for the St. Genevieve Police Department for Project Safe and Sound. Motion to approve. Second. Call in favor.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Resolution 2015-03, a resolution of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, stating intent to apply for a grant from the Missouri Department of Transportation for a safe routes to school programs. Motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Post. Okay. Resolution 2015-04, a resolution declaring the 1982 Spartan ladder truck surplus or desiding further authority.
Move to approve.
Second. Call in favor.
Aye.
Post. Resolution 2015-05, a resolution appointing Mary Beth Ferguson to the St. Genevieve Tourism Tax Commission. Motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Post. Okay, thank you. No old business, we'll go right into new business. Bill number 3998, first reading.
In ordinance approving a proposal from Vanderbilt Engineering for the purchase and installation of two new OMA actuators for the sewer plant in the Mount Knott's Sea, $12,633.
Motion approved. Second. Call in favor.
Aye.
Post. Something you need.
No, we're not waiting for sledge until next summer probably. Right. It can wait till next month.
Okay. Bill number 3999, first reading.
In ordinance amending chapter 500 buildings and building regulations, article to building code, section 500.110 in its entirety.
Make prove.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Couple comments, anybody? Bob Brown, 498 Merchant Street.
I want to thank you guys for making Merchant Street one-way. I mean, that helps so much, especially in the mornings with the traffic going up over the hill. And on the cemetery side, you guys got a no parking. Am I correct? Ain't that?
I call it Fifth Street.
Oh, Fifth Street, yes, I'm sorry. That's no parking on the cemetery side.
We talked about that, didn't we?
Because they got no parking signs on half of Fifth Street. But if you're coming off of Market onto Fifth Street, northbound, like you should be, there is no sign visible that says, "No parking." There is a sign on, right by the cemetery gate on Fifth Street, if you, or stop, the stop sign on Merchant, you can see that sign that says, "No parking." But from all the way down to the end of Market Street, there, if you're coming up, there's no sign that you can see that says, "No parking." And the other thing is, and a couple of your city guys, when they're putting up the one-way, I mean, the no parking sign, they were there when this happened. And it happened probably 25 times. Okay, a car's parked right there by my house on corner Fifth and Merchant. Well, you cannot make a left no more, because that's one-way. You guys do have a sign on the cemetery side that says, "Do not enter." But if you're in a car looking at the cemetery, because that is a distraction, everybody wants to, you know, take a look at it, you really don't see that other sign until you're committed onto the turn. And I stopped, he was like, hey, it's one-way. And they were, why don't they have a damn one-way sign right there, like on my property? And I agree with that. I mean, it needs a sign right there on Fifth and Merchant. So when they are looking down that way, they see, "Do not enter." And I mean, I mean, what happens, you guys pick one on my property, I don't care. I'm sure you have it easement anyway. But I mean, that, and then one last thing, is there's no handicap parking out there. And the other day, there's a lot of people out there, it's time of year, picking peacocks. I watched this poor guy struggle to get out of his car. I thought, I mean, what's his problem? And because right now, there's a lot of kids from Bowdy School parking because of the construction. And they usually never park around my house, but that day there was. So this poor guy, he's up there, and I'm thinking, wow, after he got out, I realized, okay, he's handicapped, and he's getting his walker and everything out so he can go pick peacocks. Like, I mean, I can see, he's got no parking on that side. If he could put, like, in front of my house even, a couple of handicap parkings out there, and then one like on Merchant Street, right around, you know, you turn the corner by my house, right there in the corner, Merchant, put one right there, and a couple in front of my house. Because there's no place for handicapped people to get out there without, you know, parking up on the hill, because when there's anything going on, they park in front of my house first, you know, to go to the cemetery. Which, I mean, that's fine. without, you know, parking up on the hill, because when there's anything going on, they park in front of my house first, you know, to go to the cemetery. Which, I mean, that's fine. Then you see some guy that can't even get around, has to park atop the hill, I mean, I think we can put a couple of handicap parking spots.
Would that be under Dave?
You have to pass, you can't just stick them up, you have to authorize.
No, I mean, have somebody go out and look and see what's feasible.
Now, as far as the notice, notification signs, like the one-way sign or the no parking sign, that doesn't require board action, we've got to have parking today, if we're going to restrict parking by this board action.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go into other business. Approval of a liquor license for St. Genevieve Catholic Parish to sell kinds of intoxicating liquor by the drink at 305 Merchant Street.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Approval of a... Oh, we do have discussion?
I have a question, not related to that specific liquor license. At some point in the past, to sell liquor on Sundays, a certain amount of the total sales had to be associated with food, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that still in effect?
Yes. Yes, yeah, yes it is. Fifty-one percent of it.
Well, we've got an establishment town that sells no food, it's open on Sundays.
I think that's still, is that something I have to fill out?
Well, and I've been told both things and I just don't know, and I just, just something we should take a look at and make sure that...
Revising points.
That's one of those ordinances, Mr. Couch, that was put into your revised codebook and never passed by ordinance. So it's something that hopefully in this next fiscal year, we'll bring it before you and decide what you want. I believe that if you don't pass the ordinance, you revert back to what the last time you had an ordinance. So I believe that the food requirement is not required.
Okay.
Currently, but you can make it required and your codebook says it is required, but if there's no ordinance...
What about state liquor license?
Pardon?
What about your state license? State liquor license, doesn't it follow your state rules?
Both.
Yeah, but if the state can say, "You don't have to have a food," you can't relieve someone from the obligation, if I will state law, you can adopt, the local regulation is more stringent.
Right. I've been asked by several people and I didn't know how to answer. So the answer is...
We can probably get a work session on several items, but that's one that did, that has come up and I've discussed with staff that I don't believe we can enforce the food requirement right now, but you folks may want it, but it's not been passed by ordinance.
So the answer is, right now, it's okay, but maybe you'll look at it later.
And you've got an inconsistency in your codebook.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Approval of a temporary liquor license for St. Genevieve Catholic Parish for 305 Merchant Street for December 31st, 2014. Motion to approve.
Well, Mayor, it says in his letter that he doesn't need that if we approve his liquor license.
I guess they're doing this in case they don't have that one in time.
Okay.
So...
Says we also would like to apply.
Yeah.
Bottom paragraph.
Oh, we can give them approval if they want to use it. All in, did somebody say?
Yeah.
Motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Thank you. Approval of a certificate of appropriateness to demolish three bays in an existing garage located at 562 North Third Street as recommended by the Landmarks Commission. Motion to approve.
Is he the owner here, here? Do you have any questions?
Anything at all.
Motion second.
Yeah.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Thank you. Approval of a certificate of appropriateness for Charlie Smith, Fourth and Gabriel Investments for the demolition of the third wood-framed addition, main two metal shed and wood-framed silo at 305 North Main Street as recommended by the Landmarks Commission. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a couple of questions. So Greg, you're going to be doing the demolition, is that correct? And that's what you do for a living? You do this kind of thing all the time?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're gonna, I see you're gonna take care that the original building is not damaged or affected by anything that you do.
Sure.
Okay.
He has proper insurance.
Okay. I just didn't, so, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thank you. Approval of a certificate of appropriateness for Meyer Holdings for the demolition of the house at 750 Market Street as recommended by the Landmarks Commission. Motion approved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Thank you. Approval of a certificate of appropriateness for Meyer Holdings for the demolition of the house at 750 Market Street as recommended by the Landmarks Commission. Motion approved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Thank you. And approval of a demolition request of the shed roof addition on the back of the copper heap located at 316 Market Street. Is that Monia?
Yeah.
For the sake of your information, Victoria Monia Cheval is negotiating contract with
someone for the acquisition of the building, and I think they agreed on everything he's getting as many as, he would be doing the work as the owner on the contract. And, and, it's that we meet, only one meeting this month and they want to get, it's really in bad shape. There's a memorandum for me pursuant to the code that establishes this as a unsafe and dangerous condition and it needs immediate action, so we kind of shut the certificate of appropriateness because of the need to get it down soon as possible.
Motion to approve.
Well, I'll second it, but I do have a question. What, are they planning on putting something back or parking or...
No, remove it, level it. They won't, parking is higher than the current parking lot, so you can't really get up to the vehicle, but they're going to restore the site to its original condition and clean up the back of the building.
So Petrie and Bob both were with you when you checked it out?
Actually, I, as scary as it was, I went into that building and it's in very, very poor condition, as you know. This will lean to the shed that they want to remove, actually the center beam that holds up the roof. I gave you all more pictures in the handouts tonight, it's actually collapsed and so the whole shed is falling in. This was brought to our attention by the neighboring property owner, Candle Corner, as you know it, that there's water leaking from this property into their property, and it's very hard for us to tell. We couldn't get on the roof because it was unsafe, but we were able to get into the building. There's many roof leaks, there's a multitude of problems with this, with this structure and we're very lucky that there is a kind couple that really like to take it on and clean it up and make it beautiful and live there while they operate their business below. So wanted to help them out and, because I'm afraid of the snow, if there's snow between now and December, we didn't want to wait and the addition that's going to be pulled off isn't historic. I mean, you can see, it's just a ratty metal shed that's got so much stuff in it, you can't even believe. I mean, you can't even get into that building at all. So hopefully they'll take great care when they take it down because it is attached to the neighboring property.
How is it going to affect the Candle Corner building?
Well, the addition itself is attached to their addition and so they're going to have to take great care. I think they're gonna, they'll use a bobcat for a lot of it, but where it's attached to the building, they're gonna take it down, first they have to empty the structure first, that's the first thing that has to happen, but they're eventually going to just take it down very slowly by hand, literally peeling that piece off of, that's attached to the other structure. I mean, I think it's, it's very difficult to really even assess because you can't even get into the shed, there's so much debris in there and it's so unsafe. I mean, there's this huge, huge beam that is just broken in half and so the whole thing is collapsing and I'm afraid if we don't allow this, it could bring down the addition to the Candle Corner building with it.
The owners of the Candle Corner are aware of what's going on here?
Oh, yeah, they've been, they've been contacting us on a regular basis about the problems with this, with the Monia building and they would have liked to have seen this happen probably a long time ago, but, you know, with the, with the death of Mr. Monia and the whole estate issue, it's been, it's been difficult, but we're working, we're working through it and I think this couple will do a nice job with this property.
It's a really neat building.
It is a neat building and, but they know they have, they have a lot of work and, but I think that they're prepared because they're in the business of cleaning disaster sites. So this didn't scare them at all, which scared me when I went in there, quite frankly.
Motion second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Okay. One thing, Petrie, that I don't know what the board would consider, and I don't remember talking a lot about this in the, when we were talking about the Landmarks ordinance, but would, maybe we want to consider putting, when it comes to demolition, I think we did say demolition outside of historic district, we were going to eliminate approval by Landmarks, but they weren't going to have to have authority over the city limits as far as demolition outside of the district.
Right.
But, I don't know, my feeling would be even on approval of demolition, if it's approved by Landmarks, even within a historic district, do you guys really need to, think you, you really need to see that?
The reason I was quick to move on the demolition projects that we saw tonight, if Landmark approves it, and that is really why, I mean, that's, that's somebody, that's good enough for me. If they, if they approve it, I'm going to say yes. If they don't approve it, I'm going to say no. I don't, I'm not qualified to make that decision, I haven't went out and done the work that Landmarks has done, so I don't see any reason why.
I mean, we're not giving approval on the ones that they approved.
I would give you a rationale for why it might be a good idea for you to see this. Landmarks is looking at it from purely an aesthetic, does it, are you tearing down a historic building or not? They're not looking at, do we have a qualified contractor to actually take this down? Are they insured? Will they make sure it's safe? Will they notify that? There is a procedure here, the building code provides for, all the things that someone has to do when they do a demolition, and Landmarks doesn't deal with building codes and that sort of thing.
But the determination of those things is not a policy, it's just a question of whether they meet the test of the code. That's something that could be administrated with the term.
I'm sorry, I'm not calling.
Well, whether the contractor is qualified and able to do the work in conformance with the code is not a policy decision. They made the decision to establish those standards. Can't you and I determine whether someone who comes in meets those standards?
Sure, I suppose so.
You're going to tell us if they do or not before we make it? So, I mean, it's just a, it's a step that just...
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to hear from the applicant, like, you know, all these fine folks here who came in and they're prepared to tell you they have insurance and this is how they're going to do it and that sort of thing. If that, if you think that we can handle that administratively, that'd be fine.
They would still be the body of appeal for someone who has denied their certificate if they were not to come here.
Okay. I think if one of us thinks Landmarks might approve, the demolition is something that we don't appreciate, that we might go to a Landmarks meeting and express our disapproval at that meeting.
Right.
Right? I mean...
Okay.
So incorporate that into the ordinance, okay. And I'll be bringing, by the way, bringing you back revisions to the ordinance based upon our conversations from last week so that you can see some alternative ideas and hopefully we can figure out maybe a way to amend the ordinance to make it better for everybody. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, we do need to have a close session, that could be a while, in regards to real estate, perhaps, so.
I can't stay. I just can't.
Move to go into close session to discuss real estate?
If you have to be.
Yes.
Yes.
All the John Stewie, all the Jokers, all the John Stewie.
Yes.
All the friends.
Yes.
All the nurses.
Yeah.